Okay, can I have a motion that the closed meeting be closed and that the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, if you'd please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Mattney, I believe we have the Senior of the Month, Seniors of the Month.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Chairman Ritchie, Vice Chair Bailey, Mr. Nichols, good evening. As always, it is our joy to present to you our standout 12th graders for the month of March. If I could ask the good Alyssa Marie Hardison to come forward. She, yes, indeed. She is Blue Stone High School's Senior of the Month, the daughter of Sunshine Hardison, and a resident of Boyton. Alyssa, according to faculty members, Don Hackney and Amanda Bowen, is an outstanding student who always strives to do her very best. She consistently establishes high goals which enable her to grow both academically and personally. In fact, Ms. Bowen states that when enrolling her, or when enrolling in her computer science course, Alyssa had no prior knowledge of nor particular penchant for coding. Nonetheless, she has been an exceptional student in her class, enthusiastic and volunteering to help her peers. She is described as intelligent, responsible, and respectful, and also recently served as a presenter at the STEMH Summit in Danville and at the CTE Expo on the Blue Stone campus. Alyssa speaks highly of her teachers and lists computer technology and math as her favorite subjects. Mr. Hackney adds, "She is a very hard worker. She is dependable, loyal, trustworthy, exercises impeccable judgment, and is sensitive to others' feelings, and always has their best interests at heart." Obviously, education is critical, critically important to Alyssa. She states that it is, quote, "an empowerment to life and makes a perfect or a better person out of everyone, helping them perfect their social skills and improve their overall well-being." In addition to maintaining a part-time job, Alyssa also enjoys music, art, sculpting, and is a passionate advocate for animal rights. Alyssa's applied to several universities and inspired at Blue Stone. She looks forward to majoring in computer science, and much to our delight, she says that she is also considering a possible career in teaching. Once again, Blue Stone High School is proud to have Alyssa representing the Mighty Barons and serving as its ambassador and Senior of the Month for March. We're proud of you.
And can we get that in writing, that that will be teaching back in?
Yeah.
And we should also mention that, from what I understand, she's the best programmer in the galaxy.
I've heard that's true. It's not bragging, if it's true. Once again, a nice round of applause for Blue Stone Student of the Month. As you probably have already heard, Parkview High School's Senior of the Month, Reed Piercy, is representing his alma mater even as we speak this evening as a member of the Dragon Varsity baseball team, and we look forward to honoring him at a subsequent school board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight is a presentation by Mr. Scott Warner, who we all know very well as our YMCA Director for the western end of the county. Dr. Warner?
I'm gonna try this without glasses. Good evening, members of the school board, Mr. Nichols, school staff in attendance, parents and community members. My name is Scott Warner. I'm a former educator and retired school administrator of 35 years and currently the CEO and Executive Director of the Mecklenburg County YMCA. Our sites are located in Chase City in Clarksville, and with me are is our two new program directors, Ms. Malika Walton, who is a product of Mecklenburg County Schools, and two of you up there know her very well, and Ms. Rebecca Nguyen, who has ties to this community. During the course of the year, our YMCA conducts various membership drives. Last year, in an effort to introduce new residents and families to our community, we implemented a no joiner's fee promotion for new members if they would be willing to donate any amount to any school within Mecklenburg County School Division. This promotion was a success in many ways, as it attracted new YMCA members and allowed the YMCA to donate the proceeds, normally considered joiner fees, to the school principals to use in any way that they saw fit for their school. This in part is a small token of our appreciation for the collaboration and the generosity that Mecklenburg County Schools has afforded the YMCA through the offering of gymnasium space at Clarksville and Chase City Elementary and Blue Stone Middle and High School for our youth basketball program, the use of Blue Stone High School's football field for our once-a-season youth football and youth cheerleading program hosting the Halifax County Youth Football Program. This year, our new members contributed $455.11 to Clarksville Elementary School, $141 to Chase City Elementary School, $65 to Blue Stone Middle School, and $118 to Blue Stone High School, for a total of $779.11, which we've already provided to schools, but tonight we'll be providing you a facsimile check at the end of this presentation. In addition to the programs previously mentioned, we've been blessed to work with great principals, athletic directors, and teachers who have been willing to work with us in programs for the children that we share, serve as members of our YMCA Board of Directors, exercise instructors, youth coaches and volunteers, and even a hardcore weight room member. Recently, we have had some initial discussions with Dan Powell, who's the Athletic Director of Blue Stone High School, to develop a YMCA-slash-school-sponsored Strong Man and Politically Correct Strong Woman competition involving area youth and adults. The YMCA USA, our corporation in Chicago, has a very successful summer learning loss prevention program and another educational program entitled Power Scholars, which addresses student achievement gaps. We've just initiated some limited discussions with Dr. Brian Mattney and Tracy Rogers about the possibility of collaborating during a summer with a substantive summer enrichment camp program in conjunction with the School Division's summer programs to address the needs of our area youth. As with all things, resources and volunteers are needed to provide meaningful programs and outcomes, and as the smallest YMCA in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we are only able to do but so much, but we appreciate very much the collaboration with Mecklenburg County Schools. We thank you again for working with us, and we hope that you will continue to support us in our focus of being for youth development, for healthy living, and for social responsibility. So, many thanks, and the ladies are gonna bring up your facsimile check.
Do you want me to come down there? Just kind of look respectful. Good thing you wore your tie tonight.
Oh, that's wrong, Kenny. That's really wrong. He can't repeat that.
And on behalf of the School Division, we want to say to the YMCA, thank you very much from our principals and from the schools, and for all the work that you're doing to help us in so many ways. We do appreciate it. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, next we have Mr. Bill Mayhew, who is coming to us with a couple of requests.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Nichols, Board members. I'm here tonight to ask for, to provide information and ask for a vote on a request we got from the Clarksville Chamber of Commerce. They're again asking this year if we can provide two buses and two drivers, one special ed and one regular bus, so they can provide a shuttle service for the visitors to the Lake Fest Festival. They'll be running from the Lake Country Business Park to Eighth Street, and hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:15 p.m. on July the 21st. Chamber of Commerce has also agreed to compensate the bus drivers and provide insurance coverage for the buses and the passengers. Any questions?
This will be an action item. Yes.
When is Lake Fest?
July.
Mr. Mayhew, are regular buses, regular buses, or will they be used in our new?
They'll be used a regular bus, and then the special ed bus will have one with a lift on it.
Oh, okay.
Now, the next item I have is for information only. The Virginia Mecklenburg County Cooperative Extension Office and Virginia Tech are requesting three buses this year to transport students and luggage to the 4-H Camp at Holiday Lake. They'll be departing from a central location in Boyton, be departing on Monday, July the 9th at 8:30, and returning Friday, July the 13th, 2018. Virginia Tech will be providing insurance coverage for the buses and the students. They're asking for two buses to transport students and one bus for luggage. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
And next, we have the presentation of the Special Education Annual Plan that will be presented tonight and then voted on at the next meeting. Ms. Hodges?
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, Board members, and Mr. Nichols. Thank you for this time. I'm asking if you would please to review our annual plan for the 2018-19 school year. If you have your packets in front of you, pages two through five, these are the assurances that we need to make sure that we're following to meet the federal and state regulations. Page six, this is just stating that our division has no barriers that we are aware of. Now, if you'll notice, there are three pages numbered one. So, at the bottom, right-hand corner, you'll see the implementation narrative for page one, the first one you have. That's for our 2016-17 school year and the services provided. On the next page one is the maintenance of effort, that's titled MOE Eligibility, and this is the projected local funding and how it's being used. Just to give you an update, the 2016-17 year, we met our MOE for that, we're on track for the 2017-18 year, and we are projected to make the MOE for 2018-19 school year. The next page one is for your comprehensive coordinate early intervening services and the proportionate set aside. Page 12 is your narrative of the Part B, Section 11, 611 funding and the set asides. This is for your privately placed students for speech and occupational therapy. Page 13 is the breakdown of how those Part B, Section 611 is broken down according to the accounts. And then we have pages 15 and 16, that's talking about your Section 619 funding and the breakdown for the preschool funding there with the contracted person and then set aside funding needed for that. Please, if you have any questions after your review, please give me a call. I'll be glad to explain those things to you, and hoping you all will vote on that in April for me.
Thank you. Are there any immediate questions that any Board members might have?
I do. How many students do we provide services for? Do you have an idea?
As a whole, as the county? The last count that I had, it was, I believe, it was 522, the last count that I checked.
And how do the parents find out about the services? Especially the early children?
Our contracted persons, Phyllis Nguyen, she takes flyers out among the community businesses and doctor's offices, libraries and things of that sort, to let them know that she's available and what services are available, and if they have a child that's in need, they can contact us, and we'll do the child studies for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
As with the Special Education Annual Plan that we're presenting information tonight for a vote next time, we're always getting policy updates from the Virginia School Board Association, and you've had us bring policy update recommendations to you before as well. So tonight, Ms. Alga will be presenting information for your consideration. It's in the package, and these are policy issues that we need to address, most of which are not in our current Virginia School Board Association policy manual. So, Ms. Alga's gonna present that, and we'll be asking you for votes on that as well next month.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and Mr. Nichols. As Mr. Nichols has stated, we do have policy updates. These updates come specifically from the policy page that the VSBA sent out, and I believe Ms. Giammario sent out to you as well as a board. So, this simply looks at regulations at this time to try to make sure, as we have transitioned from one policy manual to another, that we make sure those policy regulations follow the policies that are in place. So, going through the list that the VSBA provided for us, I'm just gonna briefly go over in your board packet under the board docs for 7E, you'll notice that I have put some information, and it starts with proposed policy updates first read. So, tonight is for information only with approval at the April board meeting. So, for policy BDDH, which is cross-referenced with KD, and that pertains to public participation at school board meetings, there needs to be a regulation. So, it provides information about how we conduct ourselves at meetings and when the public comes to speak. So, I've attached those regulations along with an update for this policy as well, so that we are in compliance with the updated policies for BBDH and KD, as well as the regulations, which are the same for both policies. So, I'm not gonna read those to you, but if you would please go through those to make sure that those are the procedures you'd like to follow when the public addresses the board. For DGC, which is School Activity Funds, that required a policy update to keep us in compliance with what the VSBA has published and a regulation that goes along with that. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then for policy EDC, which is Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials, there's no policy update. However, this policy cross-references many other policies in our policy manual. So, I've delineated these for you to let you know where there's no policy update and where we stand on a regulation for these. So, for DEN, Disposal of Surplus Items, there's no policy update, and the regulation that we have currently was approved in 51616, so we do have a regulation in place. GBEC, which is cross-referenced with JFCH, Tobacco-Free School for Staff and Students, there's no policy update, and we do not have a regulation in the policy states, and I put this in quotes for you, that the school board may direct the superintendent to issue regulations designating smoking areas on school grounds outside buildings. For IIBEA and GAB, Acceptable Computer System Use, that's maintained regularly and updated. We do not need a policy update at this time, and the last regulation was approved January 20th, 2015. For KF, Distribution of Information Materials, there is no policy update, but there will be a regulation forthcoming. The superintendent will need to establish the time, place, and manner of distribution of approved materials through this policy. So, we'll provide that for you as we move forward. For KG, Community Use of School Facilities, the policy is updated. You have that copy there, and the regulation was approved on January 17th of 2017. For KGA, Sales and Solicitations in Schools, there was no policy update, and the most current regulation that we have was approved, 11717. KGC, Use of Tobacco and Electronic Cigarettes on School Premises, there's no update and there's no regulation. The stipulation in the policy itself says that the school board may direct the superintendent to issue regulations, so that will be at your discretion for those that says, that give that authority for the school board authorizing the superintendent to do so. For JED, Student Absences, Excuses, Dismissals, there is a policy update, and there are policy regulations, and I just want to let you know that those policy regulations are taken directly from the Student Code of Conduct that we currently have published online. JHCD, For Administering Medicines to Students, there is no policy update in our regulations. We've had those in the past, but I've been checking with Ms. Mooney to make sure that what we're providing in policy is the most current, so that will be forthcoming. JOA, For Student Transcripts, the policy is updated, and a regulation for that will be forthcoming, and that will be the superintendent establishing how parents will request transcripts for students. And then finally, the LC is Charter Schools, and that is a very lengthy new policy, and will take some time to go through, so that policy will be forthcoming as well. So, again, this is for information this evening with approval or hopefully approval in April. If you have questions in the meantime, if you'd please let us know so that we can make adjustments, so when you're ready to approve these policies, we'll be ready to go. Any questions? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alga. Each year, we also have the opportunity through the Virginia School Boards Association to nominate businesses that we have had close partnerships with that have been beneficial to the School Division. We have that opportunity once again this year, and so I'm bringing that to your attention tonight. I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not remembering all three of them that we have. Ms. Giammario, will you? Do what now?
I'll notify them.
Okay, that's right. So, yes, we will notify them once we've heard back from VSBA. So, this is just something that you all will, yeah, we don't want, we'll let you know who they are so we can get those nominations attached.
The big news for the night, of course, is the budget, and I'm making the presentation to you tonight that includes information that we have been collecting all through the year and that we will be taking to the Board of Supervisors as our recommendations for the upcoming school year. I want to say upfront with this that we don't have a state budget yet. The House of Delegates and the Senate have not come to a conclusion, and without having a state budget at this point, there's much of this that is subject to be changed because of things, finances coming from the state that we don't know truly about from revenue perspectives or components of this that they have passed laws on and promised that there would be funding to support, but that it may be unfunded mandates. So, we'll go through this. We are under mandate by law to be able to, for the school board to actually pass a budget to take to the Board of Supervisors at this time of year, and we will, our schedule is that I will present this to you and to the public tonight. We will have a public hearing next Monday evening, and then the following Wednesday evening, we will ask you to come back for a special meeting to pass this budget request. We will take it to the Board of Supervisors, and I doubt if they will even really, I'm sure they'll look at it, but I don't know that they'll be in a position to really do anything until the state passes a budget, and in the past, that has gone into June. So, it's a document to the best of our ability at this point. What we have based these projections on is based on the governor's budget projections rather than the Senate's budget projections or the House of Representatives' budget projections, so we know that there will be some changes in those items. With that being said, our goal is preparing all students for success with jobs for the 21st century, and so our focus, as you can see, is on these areas of high-quality personnel retention and recruitment, school improvement and accreditation, alternative education programs that are in keeping with the discipline laws that have been passed and to meet the needs that we have in our community, ongoing professional development, increased experiences for students within the career platforms and the CTE classes. We're looking at the expectations of Portrait of a Graduate and High School Redesign, which includes new accountability standards that we need to meet and the expectations that the state has placed on that, and we're also looking at maintaining the elementary schools. One big item that you will see in the figures here is that the bond referendum that has passed is included in this budget. So, it's larger than you would have seen in the past. It has to be included in there as we go through, but you will have it identified as the bond referendum. I talked with each of you about these items last month. We've taken all of the recommendations that the teachers have brought to the table. I'm sorry, I'm moving forward and asking you haven't. So, if you'd move to the next, this is the sheet that I have shared with you all. We have had one addition to this. Since I shared this last month, the Safety Committee has met and made a recommendation for a Public Information Officer that has been added under the idea of the alternative education programs that we have in place, because we feel like there is definitely a need to stay on top of all of the social media and to not only be able to address the concerns that come up with issues related to safety, but also as we're looking at the new schools and continuing to feed information to the public with the new schools, that this information officer would be very beneficial. There are the new CTE programs and support personnel that we have been mentioning to you, and then there are some general instructional needs that we have built into this profile as well, and we are looking at administration and operations of human resources, transportation, and finance that were also added. That's the next page to move on. Some of these we feel like would definitely pay for themselves. The diesel mechanic that we looked at for transportation, we feel like would save enough money for when we've had to send buses away to get worked on, that this position would be very beneficial to us. So, that is, these are the new components that, in addition to the current budget, we will be asking for roughly $2 million above and beyond what we have in the current budget from this current year moving to next with these new positions. Projected revenue, this is the operating fund sources of revenue that we're looking at. Again, this is subject to significant change with the budget that the state will be passing. You'll see that $25,672,593 are monies that we're projecting from the state by the governor's projection. The bond referendum is the new high school capital fund that you see taking up a whole half of what we have here, and then we have federal funds, the school food funds, and the local funds that would be the contribution that we currently would be looking for from the locality. Next slide. There are some projected revenues beyond that that we would need to deal with, which is some local transfer, the Air Force ROTC funds that come in, some of the Medicaid funds that, again, is an issue that's going to be very subject to the state budget and what's passed. We have some non-residents who pay tuition to come to Mecklenburg County, and there are some other minor things that don't show up on the graphs because of the size of them. These are the actual funding revenues that you can see from the various areas that they come in, funding from the state and other areas. This is in a PowerPoint I will be sending to each of you for your consideration as we get through this part of it. we get through this part of it. These are projected federal revenues from funds that we would be looking at for next year and it's anticipated. And you can read through those. Next. As you're looking at the Fund III revenues, you can see the various title programs that are used that we have to report on significantly and the percent of our revenue budget that is there. This is quite, Title I is money used to support educational needs of disadvantaged students, used mainly for salaries and materials and supplies. Title II is money used to support professional development. Title V is money used to recruit retained teachers, professional development and educational software. The IDEA A Part B 611 is used to provide services to special education students aged six to 22. A lot of that is salaries and benefits and paraprofessionals. Part B, Section C 619 is for special education services for students from birth to five, much of the early childhood special education services. And then of course, your vocational education is Carl Perkins that we've discussed as you've passed the CTE plan. And then the Immigration and Youth State Grant is money to help with increasing immigrant students that we have. Next slide. This is a slide showing the revenue for school foods that we have through Fund II, most of which is federal, but you can see a state school fund in blue and then a state breakfast initiative in yellow. Combined there is $1,165,865 for federal. Next slide. This is our debt service. You can see that it's been going down each year and that's helpful, but of course, we have the new bond referendum that we'll have to be dealing with. So we'll be adding that. And then our textbook funds, state and local combined. So, moving on to expenditures, we're very pleased to announce there will be no health insurance increase next year. And I can tell you from my conversations with Superintendent's School Board Association and all over the Superintendent's Association, that is very unusual. And we are very thankful for this opportunity for no insurance increases. And it's in large part because the teachers have gotten a lot more communication, I feel like, in making appropriate plans and choices. There is a need and a focus this year on additional personnel that we are in dire need of and in professional development and working with them. So you'll see as we're working through, these are the categories. Please be reminded that our Board of Supervisors chooses to fund us and approve our budget on a category plan, not an overall plan. So when they come back in, they can, they can't go in and micromanage and line item, veto items, but they can come in and tell us what in various areas can be spent. So we have to report these and ask special permission if we move funds from one area to another. And that's in the next slide. 31,7 in instruction, $1,009,000 roughly in administration, $4,230,000 in pupil transportation, $2,900, almost three in operations and maintenance, $2,400,000 in technology. And the total in Category 1 for requested for next year will be $43,411,563. That is an increase. Next slide. You can see a breakdown of what percent is spent in the various areas. Next slide. And then you can see from year to year what in each of those categories we have been spending and how they have increased or remain relatively flat. Next slide. Expenditures for these funds is just again, looking at operations, school food, federal debt services, textbooks, and the totals with the capital fund that has been borrowed and will be, begin to be paid back. And then I'd look at the overall budget for fiscal year 2019. And then we have, next slide, projected revenue funds. You'll see the total projected local contribution and then the total projected 2019 revenue budget, which is just shy of $50 million. Next slide is projected revenues as opposed to projected expenditures. And again, these are projections. As we're looking at them, the revenues can certainly change and we have to make adjustments And this is looking at increases by category in what we're asking for. Most of it, of course, in instruction, a small percent in administration, 11% increase in pupil transportation. That is primarily a new radio system that's been requested, in-car cameras, and some increase in maintenance. Operations and maintenance is because of an increase in utilities, purchase services, and some capital outlay. And then in technology, we have increases in our Promethean boards with some projector refresh issues that we have there and then iPads as well. Instructional increases, our new personnel stipends and remediation. And that's our budget as we would send it over as far as we know right now. Any questions? Again, I will be sending each of you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation to look over between now and then we will have the public hearing about this next Monday.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Nichols, what's that budget, the ADM, what are we basing that? What ADM are we looking at?
The ADM is projected to go down again next year. Ms. Pfeffer, have you got a number? You remember what the number was on the ADM?
I think it's, we're basing this year at 41.6. I think it's 48, 4,890 next year. Almost something of two or three.
There was a promise at the legislature that, well, there was a suggestion at the legislature that school divisions that have continued to see decreases in enrollment over the past 10 years as we have would be given some, again, some added funding. It didn't make it in one version of the budget and it did make it in the other. So there again is one of the areas that we'll have to look at and see what comes through the budget.
Does that projection come from the state?
Yes. That projection comes from the state. We verify in October what we have compared to the projection and then we'd have to verify again in March what we have and adjustments are made according to the March projections.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right. Thank you. And other than that, as far as my own comments, I wanted to bring to the board's attention and the public's attention that the other two activity buses have come in last, this week, last Friday, last Friday, and will be on the road tomorrow. They look very good and we're very thankful to have the four activity buses and then the small bus for the students to be able to work with. So that's a very good thing. I also want to bring to your attention that as you voted earlier in fall to add the fishing opportunities for our students, we have been working on that process throughout the year. The Virginia High School League has also been working on that process because it's been something that has been requested of the High School League. I had a conversation with them to compare what we've been looking at compared to what they're going to do and the basic sentiment is, as we had planned, to try to work primarily with the Bass Federation. So we have found the right people to be able to do that and they're actually, without us having a team participating, having this year's state competition finalist for the year for students at Okanichi State Park in April. And we've been invited to participate in that and I'll get you some more information about that to see just what a big ordeal across the state fishing clubs are becoming. So you were a little bit ahead of the curve on that and we're looking forward to having our students be able to participate in that. I also want to bring to your attention that the School Board Association Regional Meeting will be held for the southern, we are the south, southern region. And it will be held here at the Estes Center in April. And of course, you're all invited to participate in that. And that's my comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. I think we'll go ahead to the committee reports. From here, the Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee, Mr. Palmer?
I don't think that we have anything other than that we're still looking at trying to come up with an entrance to state field or state area that we're talking about for this school.
Okay.
Other than that, that's basically.
And does the Capital Improvement Committee have a recommendation?
Now, with the Capital Improvement Committee and the Architectural Form, yes, firms, yes, we have three that we interviewed and we'd like to come up and recommend Blue Justice Upton Architect as far as being the one that we go.
All right. And that'd be to, I guess, enter into negotiations for their services. All right. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. The Finance Committee, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met today at 5:00 and we reviewed the bills and we found them satisfactory as presented. We will have a recommendation for that. Just like to remind the board of our budget schedule. On Monday, March 26, we'll meet here at 6:00 to hear public input on the budget. And then the following Wednesday, March 28, we will meet here at 6:00 to vote to approve the proposed budget. And that's all that we have. Thank you.
All right. The Gifted Talented Special Ed Health and Family Committee? No report. The CT Career and Technical Education Committee. Here comes Mr. Cypher's.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, school board members. Tonight, I'd like to present for you, for information only, the 2018-2019 Carl Perkins Plan, which you should have in your packet. For this plan that we have to submit, if we do receive the new Perkins allotment, we will go in and adjust that, but for right now, we prepare it based on the amount that we received last year or for the current year that we're in. With the application, it's pretty much the same as it was last year. We have made some adjustments to the CTE Advisory Committee. We've added some more members in. That was one of the recommendations they had was to triple the number of people in your advisory committees. So when you had meetings, you would have a larger group of folks there. So we have added two more members since, I sent this to Paula last week, and we're looking to add some more members too as well. And the total for our plan that we have again is based on what we received for this current school year is $88,852.06. Do you all have any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Cypher's.
And we'll present it for action next month.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to state on behalf of Mr. Cypher's, a warm congratulations. They had the CTE audit with the federal government and they came through with flying colors and just did a great job and we are so proud of everything that the committee did with his leadership, well, with the teachers did and the students did with his leadership. And so he is highly to be commended with the staff that he worked with for that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cypher's. We appreciate all you do. The Athletics Committee, you haven't met, Mr. Johnson?
I don't remember.
Okay. They haven't, I don't believe you've met recently. The Instruction Committee, I believe we're going to schedule a meeting soon to discuss initiatives for teacher recruitment, different ideas to try to solve some of the teacher recruitment retention problems. So I'll be in contact with the other committee members shortly on that so we can get together. Now we've reached the public input section. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No one tonight.
All right. We'll move on to our action items. May I, in regards to the minutes from the regular school board meeting held February 19th, 2018, may I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on February 19th, 2018?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Dain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to the bills, do I have a motion that the school board approves the payment of the bills?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends the bills be paid.
All right. The Finance Committee has recommended that we pay the bills. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the school board approves the personnel recommendations? I have a motion from Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, with exception.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
On the matter, student matter, SD 2017201813, do I have a motion that the school board supports the Discipline Committee's recommendation?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to the requests, RFP for architects, we have a recommendation from the Capital Improvement Committee. What was the name of the architect again, Mr.?
Blue Justice Upton.
All right. That we enter negotiations with Blue Justice Upton for their work on the new school?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr., well, I guess we don't even need that. The committee approved it, right?
Oh, that's true.
Go right to roll call. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to capital improvement projects, may I have a motion that the school board approves the capital improvement projects?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell? Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
May I have a motion that Dr. Brian Matney be appointed as designated to sign official correspondence for the superintendent in the superintendent's absence?
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
May I have a motion that the school board approves the 2018 Lake Fest bus request? I have a motion for Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
And may I have a motion that the school board approves the 2018 V SBA Business Honor Roll nominations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay, reminders. March twenty-sixth is the 2019 budget public hearing at six P.M. here, and then, on the twenty-eighth, it's the special meeting for the school board at six P.M. April second through the sixth is our spring break. April sixteenth is our regular school board meeting. April twenty-third is our V SBA Spring Forum. And now, Board of Member remarks, I'll start with you today, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, okay, thank you. We had a lot of fun today with the four H Jennifer Owens doing Reality Store at Bluestone High School and Parkview High School. I want to thank all those who came and volunteered and gave our students a taste of reality. It's a great program. We always need more volunteers to do that. Please contact Gary Cypher's or your high school principal to let them know that you'd like to volunteer there. I'd also like to thank Gary and the CTE teachers and the principals and especially our students. They did interview students during this process, and they were very impressed by our students' forward vision, being aware of the careers that are out there and what they need to get the training to hold a job and be productive citizens. And we're so glad that that audit was a success. Of course, they made some recommendations, and we're doing everything that they have asked us to do in that department. I'd also like to thank Clarksville Elementary School for inviting me to come read for Dr. Seuss's birthday, and Ms. Dalton, y'all always do just a fabulous job with that, and I thank you for that. And I also want to thank a special guest who volunteers his time to come and be the Grinch that day. I don't want to divulge who that person might be, but he visits our county administrator's office frequently. So, I just want to give a special shout-out to the Grinch and thank him for that special visit. I'd also like to congratulate the Parkview High School Forensics Team. Nine of their thirteen members are going to be competing at the state level on March the twenty-fourth, and I just want to remind all of the newspapers that forensics is a V H S L state sport. And I didn't notice that on the sports page. I did notice it on the front page of one of the papers, but these athletes, mental athletes, do a fabulous job, and we are likely to have state champions coming from Parkview. I'd also like to thank the South Hill Moose Lodge, who donated fifteen hundred dollars to South Hill Elementary to cover school lunch debt there. And it's just remarkable to me when we come forward with these situations that we have that our community steps up and does that. I want to thank the South Hill Moose Lodge for that tremendous donation. And last but not least, I'd like to offer my condolences to Dan Tanner's family. Dan is my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors, and we are deeply saddened by their family's loss and his daughter Meredith, and I would ask that we all pray for their family as they have their services tomorrow to honor her life. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Campbell?
Coming down the line?
None for you?
Yeah, sorry. Make sure I didn't jump ship. Also, in working today, I do have an opportunity to service families in many different aspects of their life, and this is the hardest. And I just did Meredith and Gary's wedding not even eight months ago, and it's hard. You know, Dan, again, is a counterpart. He's not been serving the same district, but I think a lot of the family, and again, he does serve on the Board of Supervisors who, you know, that's our funding mechanism. So, I enjoy the relationship that I've built with him on that level. But, again, do want to remember that family that services tomorrow at eleven o'clock at New Hope Baptist Church, and she will be buried in Cambridge, Virginia beside her grandparents. Also, again, ditto to what Mrs. Bailey said, again, I was able to read those articles in the paper about the forensics and different things, and it's great that we have such talented students in our school system and are going to be able to compete. I did read that article as well. And just a phenomenal job to all of the teachers and the administrators who helped prepare those students. Again, it takes a joint effort of everybody, and, again, I just can't say enough about Mecklenburg County Public Schools and what it meant to me in my life and what it means, still means today as we continue to move forward and tonight and moving forward with the architect, you know, again, we're one step closer to getting new secondary schools, which we very badly need. And, again, I think we'll be a beacon of light and a pillar in the state of Virginia when it comes to education. I'm excited to be a part of it. So, thank you all for what you do. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Garner?
I'd just like to say I attended the robotics competition two weekends ago, enjoyed it. I think it's this weekend they compete in Blacksburg, and if they do well, they'll move on to Maryland. And Dr. Carter and I shared that hard bench watching them.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to say that we've got some big days ahead of us. After the architect interviews we had the other day, I'm amazed. I feel like we're in the big league with some of the designs that we saw. I'm very impressed. Someone asked me just today, do you really think it's gonna happen? And I said, I can assure you that it's gonna happen. And in a few years, our kids are gonna be going to a school that we've never seen anything like it. And I'd like to give a lot of the credit to our superintendent, Mr. Nichols, pushing this and for all the other board members that have been behind pushing it. But we've got some exciting days ahead of us, and some of the school designs that I saw, I was just amazed. It's not like our traditional school that I went to when I was a young man coming through middle school and high school. And then, I appreciate the school buses, the activity buses, and I just feel like we're sort of in the big league now. North Virginia don't have anything on us, and I'm proud of all the work that's been put into it. And I also like to thank Mr. Warner for the check that he brought over tonight. He said, well, that's a little bit. Well, a little is much. God is it, and I thank you for that. That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I just wanted to continue on about the new school and the hiring of the architect. You know, we met with the architects and had the chance to interview them, and there were some impressive companies. But we need to know that the architect can only work for maybe another thirty days before the land has to be secured. So, that's where we are, just so everybody knows, that we need the Joint Education Committee to continue their work as quickly as they can on securing our site, or else the whole process is just gonna grind to a halt. So, we need our land. And I also wanted to compliment, I imagine, is maybe Mr. Dalton and his employees on the room or whoever hung everything here in the room. They did a really nice job with this beautiful sign that the students made from Bluestone, I believe, and the banners that all the schools gave us. It looks really nice in here, and I appreciate that, and thank you very much. And that's it for me. So, if nobody else has anything, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, we're out.